Thank you. Call to order the meeting of the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd, commencing at 4:32. All council members are in attendance. The first item we have tonight is an approval for the Sixth Amendment to interlocal cooperation agreement between King County and the Redmond -- City of Redmond for maintenance of the Redmond Watershed Trails.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Meg Angefine, one of the Park Operations Supervisors, and I will be presenting this tonight. I won't go through the whole title again, as you just did. In 1989, a King County bond measure financed the acquisition, construction, and development of public green spaces, including the Redmond Watershed Preserve. As part of this agreement, King County has a financial obligation to support maintenance, operations, and administration of the trails and support system until the watershed has contiguous boundaries with Redmond or some other city. In 2001, the original agreement was amended to reduce the county's annual contribution from $30,000 to $20,000 to more accurately reflect maintenance, operation, and administrative costs. That amendment also provided for a reduction in the county's annual contribution when new regional connecting trails were developed outside the watershed. In 2010, the Third Amendment to this agreement reduced the county's annual contribution to $6,200 in recognition of new regional trails constructed through Redmond Ridge Trilogy and the resulting reduction in the amount of regional trail in the watershed preserve. Subsequent amendments, including this Sixth Amendment, include adjustments for inflation as defined in the agreement. The first year of this term calls for remittance of $8,220.50 from county to the city. This agreement has been working well, and we hope it continues in the future.
And our hope is that this is placed on the consent agenda of our next business meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions from council? Thumbs up to see this on the October 7th business meeting. Fabulous. That was an easy one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have informational item on the Old Firehouse Facility Recommendation Process Update. A couple of handouts. Oh, fabulous.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, City Council. So this item is an update on our stakeholder engagement process for the Old Firehouse Teen Center. I'm joined today by Lindsay Falkenberg, who is our Parks Planning Manager. She is the project manager for this engagement process, working with SNA, our consulting team, and she is going to present this item.
Hello, Council President Kritzer and the members of City Council. I'm Lindsay Falkenberg, the Parks Planning Manager, and I am here this evening to provide an update about the community engagement process for the Old Firehouse Facility Recommendation. So the last you heard from Parks and Recreation on this topic was during your July 22nd study session, when Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton and consultants from Partite and McKenzie presented the facility's condition assessment. That report outlined the current state of the building and the challenges it presents. Since then, we've launched a community engagement process designed to provide this council with a community-informed recommendation to guide your decision on the future of the facility. I want to talk a little bit about that process. So we began by convening a stakeholder group of 23 participants. This group was formed collaboratively with input from park staff, city leadership, and the City Council Teen Center Subcommittee to ensure a balanced and diverse representation. Members include teens from a range of backgrounds and experiences, including service providers, community organizations, commissioners, parents, city staff, alumni, and teens. The full list of members is in front of you, and it's available publicly on redmond.gov/OFH as well, for the public to see. For privacy reasons, the name of the teen participants are anonymized. The stakeholder group will meet six times in total. We've already met twice, on September 10th and 17th, and we have four more meetings scheduled on October 1st, 8th, 22nd, and 29th. The first two meetings have been focused on leveling everyone's knowledge of the project through sharing more information about the facility, its use over the years, the challenges inherent in maintaining it, and the facility's condition assessment, and more. And the following meetings will be focused on providing stakeholders space to discuss -- for discussion, centering around stakeholder desires, visualizations, opinions, knowledge, wants, and needs. While the first two meetings have been information-heavy, our facilitator, Darcy Edmonds, has carefully built in time for stakeholders to ask questions and be engaged. The stakeholder goal is to recommend whether to renovate or rebuild the Old Firehouse or investigate a rebuild of the Old Firehouse, and the location of a potential rebuild is outside the scope of their recommendation work. To reach this recommendation, we're using a carefully-guided community engagement process led by our facilitation experts at Stephersons and Associates. The process is a tool called Multi-Objective Decision Analysis, which is aligned -- or outlined in Attachment A of your packet, and I've provided with you with an updated paper version of the factors that are involved in the process. This framework asks participants to identify and prioritize the set of factors that you see in front of you, assign weights to those factors based off their importance, and consider the two possibilities, either renovate or investigate a rebuild through the lens of those factors. The tabulated scores and weights are shared back with the group, not to determine the outcome, but to prompt discussion and provide information to help them work towards a consensus. The factors included in your packets for a draft and have since been refined, and those refinements are reflected in the handout you receive tonight. I'm happy to attach the updated factors to the next council packet so that they can be available to the public. We are also conducting community focus groups. This is because the stakeholder group is size-restricted, and we wanted to provide an additional opportunity for a broader community engagement. To that end, we're hosting two rounds of community focus groups. The first round took place last night at the Redmond Senior and Community Center with about 30 community members and participant -- or, sorry, in attendance, along with Councilmember Fields. The second round will take place tomorrow, on September 23rd, at the Redmond Community Center at Marymore Village, starting at 5:00 p.m., and there will also be an online option available tomorrow night, and the link will be posted tomorrow on redmond.gov/OFH. Last night, we had 12 people in attendance that identified themselves as community members or OFH alumni, 10 people that were -- 10 people that were in the parent and service providers group, and then nine people in the teens group. Outreach to advertise the focus groups as happening was -- has included posts on Parks Facebook on 9/15, City Facebook on 9/17, Parks E-News on 9/17, Parks Facebook on 9/20, Parks Facebook on 9/22, City Facebook on 9/22, City E-News on 9/22, and three posts on the OFH Instagram, and city posts were also posted on the City X account. There's another round of posts coming to the OFH Instagram, Parks E-News, City Facebook, and City X before tomorrow night. We also directly followed up with approximately 95 interested participants who have either have ties to OFH or city processes or have expressed interest in participating in focus groups. The focus groups are designed to provide input on the weighting of the decision factors, respond to specific questions raised by the stakeholder group, and share additional feedback directly with the stakeholder group. We've organized the focus groups by community identity or user group, which allows us to ask more targeted questions and better understand the needs of different populations. Input from these sessions will be provided directly to the stakeholder group for consideration and summarized in a report that will be included in the materials you receive, along with the final recommendation. Our next steps are continuing to update you all as this process continues to progress. Of course, there is the Teen Center Subcommittee, who I know his purpose is to observe the process and report back to the full council, but I will also return on October 28th during Committee of the Whole for another update. The final recommendation packet will be presented to you on November 12th during a study session, and we hope to have prepared you adequately to take action on this decision on November 18th during the business meeting. Thank you for your time and attention, and I am happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Could I actually just start with the logistics, that list of dates? I heard November 12th, the final recommendation is expected to come at our study session. Is that correct? Could you state the date following? State the date following? Thanks.
State it again.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. November--
We didn't have that material in our packet, so I just want to make sure I get them noted down. Thank you.
Yes, totally. So on November 12th, we will return to study session, and the recommendation will be presented to you at that time.
And then a decision point is hoped for on November 18th at the business meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we'll have another update at Committee of the Whole in October.
Yes.
Great. Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I'll just add that I think the Subcommittee has recommended that we get a preview if there is the recommendation before that study session.
Oh, yes.
So as is our practice, where we'll probably see the touching committee be able to ask questions and prep for the study session, so it's not--
Yes.
--first-conversation study session decision the next week, but can you remind us, Director Hamilton, of why it is that we're trying to aim for later November for--
Absolutely. The condition of the facility has issues with particularly the roof, the windows, the building envelope, so the exterior of the facility with water penetration and things like that. Maintaining it through the winter months is extremely difficult and increases the risk of building failure, so we are hoping to come to a decision on if we need to make steps to preserve the facility through the winter or if a demolition will be in order, so we're not investing in a facility that we will in short -- in a short time demolish. If a decision isn't made by that November 18th or by the end of the year, when council goes on recess, essentially what will happen from our perspective is we will continue to care for the facility to the best of our ability, to make sure that there's not penetration from weather, but I would say similar to the senior center, when we did eventually have to come back to this space and say, hey, we may need to make an investment because we're seeing some signs of building failure, and then there was the decision to invest or demolish, that would likely be a point that we would hit in sometime in the winter months. So our preference would be proactively deciding before the end of the year.
Thank you. And I will note that we -- council leadership has also made sure that there are some additional -- there's additional space in our schedule should we need to go a little bit further into December to have more discussion on it, but hopefully we'll get this feedback. And I will just call out this dotted line on the diagram that we have in our materials of the focus groups to council in addition to the stakeholders--
Yes.
--so that the feedback from everyone, so that we, you know, anyone who gives input into this process, it'll go into the stakeholder recommendation, but that council will also get to directly read input gathered from those focus groups to make our decision, since I know, you know, everyone to make -- we want to make sure everyone's voice can be heard and considered, and that everyone knows that we're going to have that opportunity for it to be considered while -- and then I'll just note one thing on the stakeholder group, since there's been some questions, because I asked for clarification on this, those who are listed as teens are those who are under 18, although there may be some who are -- who we might think of as young people or teen-type of people that are in the other categories above where we see their names. And also just to note, since there's been some questions about how many folks are actually a part of the city, that there's only several city staff. Most of the folks that are listed, for example, like our commissioners or, you know, service providers that we work with, they work with the city and engage with teen services but aren't city staff. Those are residents or other folks that we work with. And so I'd just note, from my perspective, as someone who's been a part of kind of thinking, looking through this group, we did ask that we have a really robust representation of teens on here. I'd hoped we'd get to 50%. I think we're close, if you look at like 20 or under, but I think -- and then I know a couple folks, yeah. So anyway, I would just say, I think I do -- I really appreciate the work that's gone into kind of thinking about having a lot of different voices at the table. We did want to make sure that those who've been really passionate about this and coming to council have their voices represented here, but also that we do hear from a lot of different segments of folks that are using the Teen Center or are engaged in teen services. So that's just a little bit from the discussion.
I appreciate that, Council President. And if I might, I'd like to be really clear. There are three individuals who are associated with the city by employment. One is a facility staff member, which was at the advisement of our consultant. They shared that that's been really effective, just a different point of view in the space, someone who's maintained the space, who's been a part of the space, so that person is involved. One is actually a direct teen service staff member who works very closely with our teens, particularly in the music space, and has been very passionate about the preservation of programs and serving teens. The third actually does not work for the Parks Department, works in a different department on a different topic, and is actually engaged in the process as an OFH alumni. And so while they are a city staff member, they are not actually connected to the work internally. And then, as you said, our commissioners are all volunteers and are extremely in tune with our community, and they bring a lot of really important engagement from our community, and it's just so great to have their continued engagement around this process. So I will say, at the first stakeholder group meeting, when we were in person, just sitting and seeing the vast diversity within the room of ages, of gender, of race, of all of the above, was just really exciting and inspiring. I think we've put together a really positive process moving forward, and I am excited to see as the conversation increases over the next two meetings and the engagement increases, what recommendation comes forward to City Council.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions on this topic, on the process? I briefly wanted to ask, when you gave your introduction, you mentioned the part about location not being in the scope. Could you just touch on that again, because you went through it really fast, and I was like, did I catch that?
Absolutely, yeah. So we're asking the stakeholder group to consider two options, renovate or investigate a rebuild, and what we -- one of the things we want to note is that it's an investigation of a rebuild, is what they're recommending, right? And so that would involve significant further community engagement, and one of the things that would happen during that other -- the additional community engagement would be a conversation around location, so we just want to be clear that, you know, investigating a rebuild does not necessarily mean it will -- a future facility would be on the same site or not, it just means that we would investigate it and do further community engagement.
And part of the reason for that is that, as we're all aware, the downtown corridor has developed so significantly that one of the things that has not been in the scope of this current investigation is what are the limitations of that particular site? So if we were to rebuild, how far up could we go? How much space could we accommodate? What types of amenities could we accommodate on that space? And so just wanting to ensure that we're remaining relatively focused. I also shared with the Subcommittee that one of the things, when we went through the senior center process, that I felt like we learned in that process is that when we widen the scope too much at any one phase, it's actually really difficult to get to a decision point, because there's just so many more factors. And so want to emphasize what Lindsay just said, which is, there will be more engagement, there will be a lot more conversation. Council President Kritzer did request that as we're going through this process, there will naturally be some conversation around location, and to please include that in the recommendation that comes forward as informational to City Council, but that hopefully we'll be able to kind of come to a relatively clear recommendation for you all, and then continue that process in the new year.
Yeah, and maybe it's helpful to know that what comes to you in your final study session packet will be a kind of like a two-sentence recommendation that's kind of summarized, but then it will also be a report on the recommendation that encompasses all of the nuance, all of the conversation, all of the, yeah, all of, kind of all of what's happened during the stakeholder group process, and then the third piece will be that focus group report that essentially summarizes everything that was said during the focus groups.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer.
Yeah, I'd just follow up on that. Councilmember Nueva Camina and I were able to meet with the staff as part of our Subcommittee work following up after the first session, because this question came up amongst the stakeholders themselves of just around kind of like, how is it we could make this decision? And I just, I think we emphasize how it is important for council to know and for us to gather, I think at this stage, and if we were to make the decision on, for example, to not renovate, to know, to be able to know what the opinion is around location, and to be able to get some of the nuances of that as part of this process, since people are going to want to talk about it, and it is a part of the -- I'm already hearing that, it's part of the discussion of thinking about this, is where would -- where should this exist and what should exist, right? And in particular, I think, the importance of the location to those who really feel passionate about it. So hopefully we'll be getting those details delivered to us as part of our recommendation, and we can think about the nuances of how we take action or give direction back to the staff based on getting that information, while also knowing some of the constraints of how the follow-up might work.
Yeah, and I would love to share, for the good of the listening public, just a reminder that even -- no, sorry. Regardless of the decision or direction made by City Council on whichever date that comes, no action will be made on the property until City Council determines the action on the property. So I want to be really clear that when we talk about location, is it here, is it elsewhere, that conversation, we can't act on that as staff, and I just want to share that from a transparency standpoint, because I think that there's been some confusion a little bit around what decisions can and cannot be made, and so I want to, just for the good of the order, be clear that that is not something that we will be able to determine without the direction and decision-making authority of this council, and so that's another reason why we think it should kind of have a natural second step to the process, is because it's a far more involved conversation when we start talking about the property.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I'll just reference quickly, the conversation's kind of moved on, but actually, location is one of the factors that folks are being asked, whether or not that is a top concern or top factor of theirs. I guess actually I'll just reflect back in listening to this conversation. I think it was very clear at the beginning of the conversation, but not at the end for the listening public, that the role of the council Subcommittee and the role of the stakeholder group. So actually, what I would recommend, because I know you all have been great about updating the website, is the graphic that we have on page 14 of our packet. If we could get the council Subcommittee crosswalked onto there, I think that that would help visualize it for the public. Thank you.
Noted.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions that came up from stakeholders that sort of would weave their way back to the council. Curious, from staff perspectives, how they plan to deal with that. Specifically, one was, is it possible to expand the scope, to ask consultants, what would it take to reopen the facility before any decisions on renovation or rebuild is done? And the other is, is there a way to increase the number of teens, since this is primarily something that would benefit teens, and there have been questions raised about how this group, how this stakeholder group was decided, and why it's, you know, not a greater number or greater percentage of teens, and in particular, teens that have expressed their passion for how this turns out.
Yes, I'd be happy to address those questions. So the question around the scope and reopening with a lesser renovation was discussed in our July 22nd study session with Partite and McKenzie.
Sorry, Director, you may have misunderstood me.
I did not.
The questions that the stakeholders asked were not how you would answer them, but how they would, how council would answer them. Specifically, they were told by the consultants that the only way to change the scope of the facility work would be, and they were told this by staff, and I think they were told this also by the consultant, that the only way that they would add any scope would be if council requested it. And then the confusion about who has the final say on the stakeholder group was never resolved, and I think the question is, is that a council, is that a council prerogative authority or not? So that's, I think those questions are for council, and I'm not sure how you would communicate those questions to council as opposed to answer them for council.
Oh, got it. You had said that they were questions for staff. I'll defer to Council President Kritzer, who rose her hand.
Yeah, I will just jump in to say, I think what maybe Director Hamilton was about to say, which is, at our July 22nd study session, it seemed clear to me from the council, I think from our discussions, that we had given direction to the staff to move forward in engaging the community around a discussion of renovate or rebuild, and -- or third option, which is part of the discussion around this location thing, but kind of to be able to look at the future of the Teen Center, and so that's, so they've been tasked with what a majority of council seemed to give as direction at that study session, and unless anyone is going to, a majority of council wants to change that scope, I'm still supportive of us having that scope. I think we did have a pretty robust discussion, and at that time, I believe, Councilmember Fields and others may have raised some questions about whether we could do something to reopen, and we had that discussion at that time, and I don't think there was a majority of council members that wanted to pursue more discussion on that.
So the, so I think what you're saying then is the mechanism, since unless somebody makes a motion and there's a new vote, that staff can actually answer the question and say, at this time, their understanding is council is not interested in that, as opposed to, that's a question for council. Somehow, the question has to get answered back to the stakeholder. That's the issue. What is the mechanism to answer that question? Can the Subcommittee speak to it during a meeting? Can the Chair of the Subcommittee speak to it? Because right now, we are not speaking. And then the other question is, can we change the stakeholder members? And I'm not asking that question. I'm saying that those questions have been asked, and they're not answered.
Let's first address the decision of the stakeholder question. I think, I believe if I'm reframing the question from Councilmember Fields, the question was, are, who has the final decision on adding more people to this stakeholder group, council or staff? I believe that was the question. Is that correct, Councilmember Fields?
That's one. The other question is, we owe them an answer on can we add--
Let's take one at a time, real quick.
Sure.
Thanks.
This, this conversation was had in, we spent a lot of time on this conversation with the Subcommittee and discussed that we wanted to have a collaborative and open conversation around this. The other thing that's limiting these types of groups is the number of people in the group, and trying to balance the number of voices from any one subgroup within the community. And so I guess my direct answer to your question, Councilmember Fields, would be, we brought forward a list. It was reviewed by the Subcommittee. No issues were raised. I requested additional names. Additional names were provided. The direction given by the Subcommittee was to please increase the number of teens that were involved in the process. We received a list of community members who really are one subgroup within the community. We chose four teens off of that list and put them onto the stakeholder group. Two were residents, two are non-residents, because that was also the request of the Subcommittee. We did not add additional teens from that list, because there are four of our eight teens are from kind of this particular subgroup, and it's really important for us to have diversity of voice. So at that point, that conversation was had between myself, the Subcommittee, and city leadership, and that is the stakeholder group that went forward. At this time, adding additional stakeholder groups would be really, stakeholders to the group would be extremely difficult, because we've already spent six hours together sharing significant amounts of information. I think it's also really important for us to establish what a stakeholder is. Stakeholders are teens, but stakeholders are commissioners, stakeholders are taxpayers, stakeholders are alumni, stakeholders are our service providers. Those are all stakeholders, and all of those voices will help us create the solution that we need for a long-term future solution for teen services in this community. It is not a short-term solution. We need to look out to the future, and that means that we need to have a diversity of voices in this group. So to answer your question, that final decision was made in collaboration with the Subcommittee, myself-- myself, and city leadership.
Thank you. To get to the second question, is there any interest in having a conversation that potentially reverses our conversation from the July 22 and revisits talking about reopening immediately? Councilmember Fields?
Well, this is just for the record, I'm not interested in engaging in an argument with the director of Parks. It sounds to me, on the first question, that the answer is that the Parks director made the final decision. When the list of names was provided during the subcommittee meeting, the question was, do you have any problem with these people? That is not the same question as, what is the final balanced and recommended list for the stakeholder group? That question was never asked. That question was never discussed in the subcommittee, and that there was no final decision that I was part of where that was made. You can, you can do all you want to string disparate conversations together and call that collaboration, but I don't agree. I don't agree that, that there was a collaborative process to come up with a final list. So that's my take on it. I just want that in the record. And the second part of it is, I think that what should happen is that the council, on the second question about the facility, is that the council should encourage a full discussion with the stakeholder group. And if there is a majority of stakeholders that come back with a recommendation to say that include the cost or an assessment of what it would take to reopen the facility safely, I think that that should be part of the information that we consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. From what I heard, there was a lot of consideration and thought given to the stakeholder group and understanding that a stakeholder group needs to be of a wide swath of our community, our partners, and our teens. From the description that I heard, it sounds like there was a back and forth between the subcommittee and the staff. So I appreciate the work that was done there. Circling back to our other question, does anyone have any thoughts on that conversation? Okay, seeing none. Any other final questions for this topic tonight? All right, seeing none. Thank you all so very much for all the information. We look forward to continuing the conversation and continuing the decision process that lies ahead of us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have our Public Art Master Plan. This is also an informational item.
We have a lot of chairs for later tonight, yes. Thank you for joining us.
I'm introducing this item. Hi, sorry. Lorraine Hamilton, Parks Director. I'm joined this evening by Brittany Pratt, our Recreation Business Manager, who oversees our cultural arts team. To my right is Mr. Chris Weber, you all know him, our Cultural Arts Supervisor. And we are just here to provide an update on our Public Art Master Plan that is underway.
Yes, thank you, City Council. And yes, I am Chris Weber, Cultural Arts Supervisor, here to update on the Public Art Master Plan update process. Our previous Public Art Plan was adopted in 2017. Since then, Redmond has grown by over 20,000 people and is incredibly more culturally diverse and different in so many ways. So this update will work to ensure that our Public Art Programs keep pace with community needs, celebrates diversity, and strengthens Redmond's identity as both a tech hub and a creative community. It will also give us the policies and funding strategies needed to sustain and expand public art for the long term. I last visited you on April 22 for approval of our consultant, MIG, who was approved as part of the consent agenda on May 6. And then since then, MIG has been diligently working, initially with research, site visits, and an audit of the 2017 plan, followed by engagement with residents and stakeholders at Derby Days, through focus groups, and many one-on-one interviews with community members, artists, commissioners, and staff, plus a substantial presence at last, at last week's Downtown Redmond Art Walk. MIG will continue working on this plan through outreach with recently launched citywide questionnaire and through additional focus groups, including a Public Art Master Planning and Creative Economy Forum in November. After that, MIG will develop the draft plan, shooting for December, by December 2025, then invite public review and feedback in January of 2026, and report their findings to you during a study session on February 27. And then working towards a final plan, shooting for by the end of March 2026. Additionally, I will return to PES on November 27 with another update on our process. And I will be joined by Finance Director Cochran, who will share details on suggested updates around our public art funding that we have been working on in parallel with our Public Art Master Planning efforts, with the goal of bringing updated recommendations to council that will provide increased and predictable funding for public art in Redmond. I'm excited to share more in November, including key goals emerging from the questionnaire. And in addition, I look forward to hearing what questions you have today and those that I can't answer, I will use to best be prepared for both November and the February study session as we get more, more details from the questionnaire and all the outreach. Thank you.
I may hop in really quickly. There's not PES on November 27, so we'll hop on another committee of the whole that month. But the other thing I just want to share is that the Public Art Master Plan is not a plan that has to have a formal adoption by city council, so there's not going to be a final action date, but we will come forward as it's a draft and then as we finalize it as well. But just wanted to also be clear that this is not an item that will have final council action.
Thank you. And yeah, I hope you're not here on Thanksgiving, so that would be, that would be a challenge. You have Thanksgiving on the mind, I understand. Any questions from council on this? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, thank you so much. And thank you so much for last week at the Downtown Redmond Art Walk and being at the council booth, I got, after there were some words shared about how folks could engage with the process, several people came to the booth and said, I'm looking for that thing where I can, you know, share more or look at this stuff. So it was really great to have that right in the center of the event and let a lot of folks participate. Since we have the timeline that we do, if the council were to do one of our town hall style community conversations in January, it might be cool to have a chance for public review and feedback in an interactive way, like on display or something at that event if those two things were to happen to line up. No guarantee, I understand the schedule. I have a couple of questions around this process and, of course, all of the new plans that we're reviewing and you all are working so hard on right now are helping to implement Redmond 2050. With the adoption of Redmond 2050, we adopted the Inter-Cultural District in Overlake Village, and we know that the Economic Development Plan and the Tourism Strategic Plan also have districting as, as key strategies. So I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit to any collaboration that's happening internally to help realize Redmond 2050 through the Public Arts Plan and also take advantage of some of the strategies that are being developed in these other departments?
We are, we have an internal team of staff that are helping in this process, and that does include members of the 2050 team and other members of planning. And so that, those conversations have been throughout, and we'll probably, we'll know more of how that gets interwoven once we get closer. So hopefully, I'll have more on that in November. But yeah, it's definitely been part of all the conversations.
Okay, thank you so much. And I know that when we went through the budgeting process last year, it was really important that this be the first major project before the actual implementation of more artwork to come through. But I do appreciate that Let the Sunshine In was included at the top of the memo here, and I look forward to having more asphalt art all around the city. Thanks.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you so much. Really excited for this work. And yeah, I will say, there was a lot of excitement about public art at the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, especially as there was live public art being created and we got to see all the work from the, from our Arts Intensive Eastside program that we run. And I got to talk to some of the artists who hopefully will be creating more of this public art that will install permanently around our city. One question that I had was, I know we also have a plan that looks at the creation of publicly viewable art on private properties. Can you talk about how this connects in, or is there kind of a piece that, that is the interconnecting aspects to that when we think about kind of the built environment of our city?
Yeah, I think we are, we're trying to think holistically through this process, and so we are thinking about both the art that we are directly, that are part of our collection, but also there is art in the city that is Sound Transit owned, or King County owned, or also King County Library, which is a separate art collection. And then those, also the privately developed public art, both through the incentives in, especially in Marymore Village, but also for other reasons whereby businesses do public art. And so again, that's been definitely part of all the conversations. We're also about, we're working on a GIS map that I'm, the plan, at least the current plan right now, is to look to see, to put all of that art on that GIS, not just the ones in our permanent collection. And yeah, and then the, those incentives are in our, is in code. That was something we, we brought forward, I guess, two years ago. And a staff member who was instrumental in helping me get that part is also on our committee. And so that has been our internal committee. So that, all of those things have been talked about. And again, I will probably have more to say about that in November and make sure that I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, and we will move on to our last item on this agenda, which is Community-Based Events Innovation Fund overview. Thank you.
Hello again. This is Lorraine Hamilton, Parks Director, hanging out with you all evening. Joining me and Brittany Pratt now is Lindsay Tusing, who is our Marketing and Events Supervisor, and she is here to provide an update on the Community-Based Event, Community-Based Events Innovation Fund. Lindsay?
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm Lindsay Tusing, joined by Brittany Pratt. As you know, the city council allocated $25,000 for the Community-Based Events Innovation Fund for the 2025-26 budget. In June, you'll remember, we presented our initial concept to you and received valuable feedback that broadened our scope. Since then, we've incorporated that feedback and designed this program to address the community needs based on our communications with event permit holders, community groups, and your input. This $25,000 can't address every event request we receive, but it targets where we see the most significant gaps. We will evaluate and analyze the current program's successes and challenges. If this program is put into the budget for the next biennium by council, we'll evaluate this pilot's success and opportunities to determine how to continue or evolve the program. Today, we're sharing the detailed administration plan and want to answer any final questions you have before launching applications, ideally in the coming weeks. We'll cover eligibility requirements, grant structure, the scoring process, administrative steps, and accountability measures.
Any questions from council?
Oh, sorry, we're going to keep going.
Oh, sorry.
We got more.
I was ready to go.
I love it. All right, so I'm going to start with eligibility and basic requirements. So for organizations, based on council's feedback last time, we set the threshold for active nonprofits or, based on your feedback, fiscally sponsored groups with budgets under $500,000. The council specifically asked us to raise this threshold from $250,000 to ensure more organizations could qualify. Our analysis shows that it actually captures at $500,000 essentially all community organizations that currently host events in Redmond now. And then in addition, organizations must be operational since January 1, 2025. To be eligible, the event itself must be on city property and require special event permits or have 100-plus attendees in city rental spaces. So they could apply either through the event permit process or the rental process, but we're looking for 100-plus. We lowered this from our original 500-person threshold based on your feedback in June. The 100-person threshold aligns with special event permitting, which creates consistency across city processes and clarity for the community. This requirement ensures public money supports public events while maintaining safety standards, accessibility requirements, and insurance coverage that are baked into both the special event permitting process and the rental process. In addition, events must be free and open to the public and serve missions around community building, arts access, wellness, and/or cultural heritage. In keeping with council feedback, the innovation component of an event will be part of the application and scoring part of the process instead of an eligibility requirement. For smaller gatherings that don't meet these thresholds, organizations can apply to be community contractors and access city space for free, and that assistance targets the gap for small and medium-sized programs.
Now, some more details about the structure and the award process. Individual awards will range between $250 and $5,000 per organization per year. The grants can fund standalone events, a series of events, or specific elements within a larger event. The application window will open in a few weeks for the 2026 events and close in the winter for scoring and awarding. For this biennium, all $25,000 will be distributed for 2026 events in this initial cycle of grant programming in future years. If the fund continues at similar levels, we would split that evenly between the two years in the cycle. To apply, the organization must submit an online form with the required documents, including the IRS determination letters, a recent 990s, and the event budget. Because of this type of administration, all qualifying applicants will receive some level of funding. However, one grant per organization per year prevents overuse by any single entity. Importantly, this is not a competitive rejection process. Every organization that meets eligibility requirements and submits a complete application will receive some level of funding. The scoring determines amounts and awards within that range. And on that topic, the scoring and granting overview is as follows. So once an application is received, the program administrator will review it for eligibility and completeness. All qualifying applications will then be sent to an interdepartmental staff team for scoring. The scoring matrix that was included in the packet for your review specifically prioritizes four categories by which all applicants are judged: innovation, community impact, accessibility, and financial need. Those are all weighted evenly. Different applicants will naturally be stronger in different areas. For example, a newer event might excel in the category of innovation, others at community building. This balanced approach ensures a diverse range of community benefits get recognized and funded. Upon award announcements, direct payment will be made to the organization at that time, so it is not a reimbursement model. Awards are paid directly, and that was part of your input in June as well.
Okay. And lastly, after award amounts have been determined and communicated, there are a few additional requirements and administrative steps. One is, events receiving funds must be submitted to experienceredmond.com to ensure they're open and accessible to all of Redmond. And then secondly, within 30 days of the completion of event, of an event, organizations must submit a post-event report. That report is going to ask for things like attendance data, community benefit assessment, final budgets, and lessons learned. This reporting is standard for grants administered by the city and helps us inform the continued success of the grant program. And then, of course, most importantly, noncompliance with the post-event report would, of course, affect future grant eligibility, and the city retains the right to make final determination on eligibility and awards.
Finally, in closing, this structure ensures that the $25,000 investment directly supports community enrichment while maintaining fiscal responsibility, transparent administration, and maximizing community benefit. Based on our analysis of current permit holders, this budget should serve the organizations currently using our system, and the reporting requirements will give us concrete data to, on the community impact for future program decisions. This pilot helps us understand actual community demand before future budget discussions, and we're happy to take your questions.
Thank you. I was excited to get to the questions part. Any questions from council? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. Really exciting and appreciate the detail that you put in here. One question that I had was, if there's an event that multiple nonprofits are doing together, and they both apply for the same sort of event, would both potentially get funding?
They would both potentially get funding if they each supply a complete and qualifying application. It would be considered in that category of elements within another larger element.
Council President Kritzer?
Thank you for taking our feedback and the thoughtful work on this. I think one of, one of the ones that was brought up was around the threshold of number of attendees, and I do appreciate bringing that down or offering the option around the special event. and I do appreciate bringing that down or offering the option around the special event permit. I'm curious, do we often see events with less than 100 attendees that actually need a special event permit? Or is that going to be actually for bigger than 100 attendees anyway?
Events with less than 100 people are typically a miscellaneous use permit. When it's above 100, that's when it might creep up into a special event. The reason that we encapsulated this special event permit model is, like Brittany mentioned, to keep it consistent across permitting standards throughout the department. And I think that speaks to the greater service of incentivizing slightly larger events that provide a greater community benefit.
If I might add as well, I think one of the places that we get most feedback around needing support is at that 100-plus special event threshold. We don't tend to get a lot of feedback that miscellaneous use permit threshold, because that threshold, what the requirements are, the additional staffing fees, the permitting fees are far lower. We just don't tend to get the same feedback around what it costs or what it takes to run those events, as you maybe hear from the special event permitting. So, that's the other reason that that threshold is in there, is that's really where we hear from our event producers, is at that 100-plus threshold.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I think my only concern is that I think part of the idea of this fund is for new things to be able to start up. And sometimes, event producers don't know how many people they're going to be able to attract. You know, they'd hope they'd get over 100 people, but I guess it's more, they will be providing an estimate on their numbers, since many of the events, they won't be able to tell you how many if it's new.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much for integrating all of the feedback from our last conversation. I also had the event permit question. Maybe I want to offer up an example. So, one of the folks that gave feedback to me earlier in the spring, their event was an idea for a multi-night kind of film festival to be housed at the community center. So, that wouldn't be 100 people necessarily on any given night, or it could, but let's say if it didn't, and it was even a smaller room being reserved. I'm wondering if we could use that as a test case, for instance? Is that type of project that would be eligible to apply for these dollars?
I can picture an application being eligible and qualifying if the explanation is given that this is across a series of events, that it is likely to draw a total of more than 100 people across that series, and I don't see a reason that wouldn't qualify.
Sure, okay, thank you. Well, once again, thanks for your work on this, and I appreciate Council President Kritzer bringing this to the table last year during the budget process. Really excited about this. And I do hope, I appreciate too, the idea to make sure every dollar gets out and make sure everyone who applies gets something, because they're helping us learn, and so, to make sure that they're compensated for that. I think that's helpful. I hope, like in our human services granting process, that folks will have a chance to get feedback from you and whatnot as we go through the process as well. I look forward to seeing how this goes. My last question is a bit technical. I don't need an answer right now. I don't even know if I have an opinion on the answer. But will we require event producers to put our logo in their list of sponsors? Have we thought about that? Do we want that?
I would say, based on precedent of other granting processes that we have, which are both LTAC, but also our arts grants, our arts microgrants, I believe we require that for those as well. And so, that would be in line with our current practice for our other granting. So, yes, I can, I think that that would be something we would require.
So, my take on that personally would be, we'd love to have our logo somewhere on there. We are not going to be the lead sponsor of giant, you know, things where folks are going to get $25,000 sponsorships and whatnot. So, I think that we can be pretty friendly about that suggestion or requirement, as it were.
We could always provide for them both the logo, as well as like a small statement of funded in part, or, you know, grant provided by, with the logo. So, we can absolutely make sure that that is reflected, and I think that's great feedback.
Thank you. The two fundraisers here at the table, we are seeing eye to eye on this. Okay, I appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in with my question real quick. The onsite element on city property, if it is within a city building, does the grant then go to cover the rental space? Or is the rental space then covered because they received the grant?
So, they would go through the process, just like they would whether they received a grant or not, and they can use those funds however they see fit. If that's how they're paying for the rental space, or that's how they're paying for the permit fees, that's up to them, because it's direct payment.
Okay. So, it could inevitably go to help cover rental space?
Yeah, it absolutely could.
Okay. And then additionally, I think we touched on this, but these can also cover for a new element of an established event, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer, did you have another question?
Yeah, I was just going to add on the logo discussion, that while we don't want to make it onerous on the project sponsors, I do think letting people know that this is something that City of Redmond is sponsoring, and especially since it's something new, to say, hey, you know, we're giving some seed money to start up these cool new things in our community. It would be nice to be able to figure out how to share that out. And maybe that'll also be part of our comms as we have these events get produced. At some point, we could kind of spotlight what's come out of this initiative.
Thank you. One other bit of feedback from my notes. Just, you mentioned briefly the part about they could apply to be a partner with the city. If that information could be listed somewhere on the website when we launch this, that if they maybe don't meet these qualifications, there's an alternative listed for the folks that are looking for those innovative ways to partner.
Great, we could do that.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, thank you so much for the work on this. We all very much look forward to seeing what comes out of these grant processes, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. If there isn't anything for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.